Northfield Public Schools, it is Monday, March 10th, 7:00 PM. Dr. Richardson, we had a couple of things in our table file.
Yes, you've got a couple of personnel items in terms of appointments and increase and decrease and change in assignments. You've also got a board request from Tom Grotman to designate $1,200 from the girls' golf team's student activity account to support an additional golf coach to work with participants. And you also have a grant application that will be going in from Community Services to the Minnesota Department of Education to work on the Northfield Healthy Community Initiative, Primetime Out of School Network, and to create basically the DECO, the Greenville Enrichment and Community, from kindergarten on. I had not, I had not seen the words to go with DECO. So, again, a very ambitious project that hopefully will be funded.
Very good. If there's no objection, we will add these to the agenda as we move forward. Public comment, this is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board?
[inaudible]
I turned it on.
We just have no feedback tonight, which is
Right. Unusual.
Which is, which is gooder, gooder than better.
All right, no public comment. We are ready to move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets the minutes from the last school board meeting, which was February 24th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No.
Moved by Julie.
President.
Seconded by Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Announcements and recognition.
Okay, I have quite a few announcements this evening. First of all, I'm very pleased to inform you that on February 25th, Governor Mark Dayton announced that Bridgewater Principal Nancy Antoin would be appointed to the Board of School Administrators. In fact, Nancy's first meeting with the board was today. Basically, the Board of School Administrators is really the board that is charged with working with licensure of Minnesota school administrators, reviewing and approving preparation program, and also processing requests for CEUs, and enforcing and advising school administrators in terms of code of ethics. So, it's a very positive piece to have high-quality administrators on that board as it supports all of the administrators across the state. So again, pleased that Nancy was selected for that. Also, our Northfield mock trial team made it to the, to state competition tomorrow and Wednesday in Duluth. The squad is undefeated and excited to be back at state for the first time since 2005. The captains of the team are juniors Nick Gonnerman and Jenna Shepherd. They are coached by Stephen Cade and Paul Boemeister. Every year, the Minnesota Band Directors Association holds auditions for two statewide honor bands. Students are selected based on a recorded audition that they submit. In the grade 6, 8 group alone, 313 students auditioned for 85 openings. It's a great honor to be chosen for this group and is rewarded for hundreds of hours of practice, hard work, and perseverance. Two of our Northfield middle school students were selected for the grade 6, 8 honor band. There are Anders Peterson, clarinet, grade 8, and Linnea Larson, oboe, grade 7. We also had three of our Northfield high school students were selected for the grade 9, 10 honor band. There are Allison Langston, bassoon, grade 10, Elena Falk, trumpet, grade 9, and Lily Dunlop, bass trombone, grade 10. Also, 75 students were chosen for the 9, 10 honor band from 216 auditions coming from 59 different school districts. All of these students will perform later this spring with other outstanding young musicians, have been selected to participate in these bands out of the direction of some fantastic music educators from the state of Minnesota. So we'd like to congratulate all of those fine musicians. Also, would like to congratulate all of our 20 DECA students who competed at the State DECA Conference on March 3rd through 5th. Over 1,800 teams competed in events from all around Minnesota. Special congratulations goes to the following students who were in the top 12 in their events: John Jensen, Tyler Heppler, Bennett Falk, Matthew Reitberg, Cory Jet, Ethan Nelson, Hannah Balfani, and Jenna Shepherd. Jenna Shepherd was on stage three different times at the finals awards ceremony for being fifth in the state in one of her events and eighth in the state in two of her events, which is an HS, DECA first. And Hannah Balfani was second in the state for her sales demonstration. We also would like to congratulate our middle school Science Olympiad state championship group, who took, those championships took place on Saturday, March 1st. Our Northfield Middle School had 21 students participating in competition. Students were led by Eric Swan McDonald of Carleton College. Carleton College also provided scholarship dollars for students in need. Overall, the state meeting went well. Northfield Middle School finished in the top 10 in four events, finished 21st overall out of the 37 teams in competition. High five of the day for the Northfield Middle School students was that they received the Spirit Award. Winning the Spirit Award was a big deal for the kids and was their ultimate goal for the day. We'd also like to extend a thank you to Katie St. Clair, Assistant Professor of Mathematics at Carleton College, and four of her students, Nelson Wolf, Samer Ratchid, Evan Owolski, and Harrison Reader, for the data analysis projects of elementary data related to predicting success in MCAs. And we had a presentation last week by that group and had a full house at Longfellow to hear about the impact of the data and how well data from various assessments could predict the results in terms of MCA scores. Also, would let people know that Beyond Words will take place at Sibley Elementary on Thursday, April the 3rd, from 5:00 to 7:30 PM. Would also like to give a big thank you to over 500 high school students who came to read with the Bridgewater students for Read Across America Day last Monday. So we had a large number of students go over and support our Bridgewater students in terms of reading across America. Would also like to remind you again that Congressman John Klein will be visiting the high school on Friday, March 21st, from 10:00 to 11:30 AM. And we'll hear presentations from a number of our special education teaching staff in terms of information on funding, special education paperwork, programming outcomes, mental health issues, and special education program impact on students and parents. And also then giving Representative Klein a chance to talk to us about special education legislation in Congress and an opportunity for questions and dialogue with the folks there. And he will also be touring two of our high school's special education classrooms, and that would be Kathleen and Peggy Fix's classroom spaces. So that should be a good opportunity for him to learn more about the special education pieces. And then on the note, just to let you know that we're part of what the joys are for every other group that we're dealing, is dealing with this right now, as we are dealing with thawing in the last couple of days. We have identified two leaks, one fairly significant leak in a roof drain at the back of the high school, which will be worked on tomorrow, and a second one, which appears to be a broken drain pipe under the sidewalk behind Greenville Park. And the water pressure from that has been strong enough that we have our own little geyser in the back. And again, our hope is that as that thins out, we'll be able to wait a little bit to get that final work done. But just so that everyone is aware that when you have the kind of winter we had this winter, everybody is going to be dealing with these kinds of issues. And again, our maintenance staff has been really good about getting on this and trying to deal with these pieces, just as they have in terms of trying to clear snow for the last, what's it been, two, three years? No, four or five months.
It seems like that.
Four or five months. And again, just for any of you that didn't hear the forecast tonight, we're expecting snow and rain beginning about 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock this morning. So hopefully, we will have the board strategy session for negotiations completed by then. All right, I think that is everything that I have as far as announcements.
All right. Other announcements of recognition, or weather reports. All right. We are ready to move on to our first item for discussion, a report, which is the District Youth Council proposal.
And we actually have three individuals who I think to present.
Board members, you should have had in your packet a handout from the youth.
Hello, thank you for having us here. We all are members of the Mayor's Youth Council. My name is Ian Iverson, and this is Ben Andrew and Annika Peterson. And so, I assume all of you have this handout, and so I'd like to just give a brief outline of it and then open it up for questions. So, in the past year, we've been discussing with the mayor, the next steps for the Mayor's Youth Council, and we've decided that the, that the body that we're now on would like to focus on citywide issues in years to come. And the mayor has drawn up a plan, will be assigning members to various city boards and commissions. And unfortunately, this will take some of, most of that body's energy out of the schools. And so, we would like to see the projects that we've started at the district level continue, such as the mindfulness campaign, which was featured in the South Extra of the Star Tribune last Wednesday. And so, with that in mind, we'd like to see the district create a body similar to the Mayor's Youth Council, which we refer to here as the District Youth Council, which would be responsible for providing student input to the school board, to district administration, and to teachers and their designated representatives. As you can see, we think that the board could consist of about 15 to 16 students, who would be selected by application, which would be approved first by the current members of that board, or in this case, for this year, members of the Mayor's Youth Council, and then, again, approved by the district. We hope that issues that the board could focus on, which could include any curriculum changes, budget cuts, or calendar shifts, as well as the continuing technology transformation, and any significant changes within the district at any level. Our hope being that the high school students will have been at the different buildings over their schooling career, and will have insights, not only of how to address the issues at the high school, but at the other buildings as well. To do this, we would ask that the board assign one of its members as a liaison to attend these meetings fairly regularly, as well as a district administrator to attend every meeting and serve as a support figure for those, for this group. This group is not designed to replace any of the existing high school leadership groups, but to supplement and to add on. Currently, there isn't a student leadership group that focuses on district-wide issues. And so we think that adding a board like this could really be valuable for the district, both for students and for staff and administration. So, that's, that's about all I have to say. So I'd like to hear what you think of that, and be happy to answer any questions along with my two other council members here.
Board members, questions? Julie?
Well, I have a comment and a question. And when Rob Hardy and I met with you guys back in December, it was a really great meeting. And at that time, I don't know if you recall, but we had talked that as a board, an idea had surfaced to add a school board, add a student as a school board, non-voting member to our school board. And we discussed it and felt that, at the time, it wasn't really what we were looking for in terms of being able to reach out and get a really collective perspective across the spectrum of students. So I think this is really, in my view, really hitting the mark for what we sort of envisioned in terms of being able to get students' perspectives. So I think it, I think it's really good in that regard. And secondly, my question was, you had put in here Arcadia as one of the, the school that would also be represented, and I'm just wondering how that will work because they have their own school board? And I'm not sure, you say in here, Northfield Public Schools, and then you include Arcadia students. So I'm not, I'm not sure if that will work well in terms of the number of issues that that you would potentially address, and how that might work across the two different.
So my thought in that was that Arcadia students participate in Northfield High School activities and are still involved in the community, even if they aren't stu, in the student community here, even if they aren't students, and can provide a different perspective. And so that was our reasoning behind including them. But we would be open to changing that if the board saw a fit.
I think that's something we would, you know, I guess I would, I would want to look at and then also understand Arcadia school boards and their administrators' comfort level with that. And then, secondly, could this include ALC students?
Certainly.
John?
Could you explain for me what, what this, the council would do that couldn't be done by either the student council or a committee of the student council? How is, how is the function, the advisory role, different from what the student council would be doing?
Right. So the student council of the high school's main job is to improve the social life within the high school, and doesn't really do much to address issues outside of the high school or to address issues like curriculum or like budget issues, or really anything beyond day-to-day life at the high school or event planning. And so this, this group would be doing something similar to what the Mayor's Youth Council has been doing intermittently over the past six years, which is providing input to both the school board and district administration and staff and teachers, as well as pursuing projects like, as I said, the mindfulness campaign, which, if any of you weren't able to read the piece in the Star Tribune, I would recommend you do that because I think it outlines some of the things that we've been doing and would like to continue doing in the form of this board.
I guess I would like that also, that we would imagine this group would be able to have a more direct connection with the school board. As a student council doesn't really have a direct connection, they do have connection with teachers and administrators, but this school board would be able to provide issues for, that they found that were important for the council to address.
And if I could just go back to what you said earlier, that it, you said the student council is focused primarily on social events and so on, but since those are the elected representatives of the students, wouldn't it also be possible for them to address some of the issues that you're describing? If not, in the council's whole, some sort of subcommittee that could meet and address these issues, creating a new committee that's apparently self-selecting, that would have this advisory role?
Well, so the student council is elected, but the election turnout is very low. And so I would contest whether that isn't also a self-selecting group. The idea that we've had with the Mayor's Youth Council, and I would think would continue with this group, is to select a diverse range of students, which, who are well-suited to addressing the needs of the city and in this case, the school district. And I think that the student council has been around a long time, and they've never taken the initiative to address any of these issues. And I think our group has shown that we are willing to do that, and the, the group next year would be partially composed of rising seniors who would be taken from the Mayor's Youth Council over this year and would be able to give that group direction. And so I think that would be my response to your question.
Thank you.
Other questions? Carrie?
Thank you for this presentation. I found it very helpful to just, you know, in the way you articulated it, in addition to the handout. I share Julie's, I don't know if it's a concern, but query whether it's appropriate to have Arcadia students on this committee. You know, initially, I saw that and I thought, hmm, I wonder about that. I can see pros and cons, but I just, I think a little more thinking about that might, might be good. And as Julie said, think about the implications with respect to their school board and their comfort level with that. And I, and I second her suggestion that ALC students also be approached to have that voice as part of this, as part of this council. I guess I don't really have a question, other than to say that I appreciate the thoughtfulness of putting together a group like this. I think it would function quite differently than the student council, I think, to have students who sign on with a commitment to look at issues as they relate to the entire district, K-12, all the schools, not just the high school. I think that that's important, and I think we could find students who would, who would be willing to make that commitment. So I think it's a good idea, and I just appreciate your bringing this forward. When I had heard that the Mayor's Youth Council was going to sort of step away from school issues, I was really concerned about that. And I think this is a good alternative to just stepping away from school issues and hoping someone will fill the gap. So I think it's a very thoughtful, organized presentation. I guess I do have one question. Is there going to be some, still some school connection to the Mayor's Youth Council, or how, what do you see that?
Yeah, so we addressed that in, what is it, the fifth or sixth point? And so there would certainly be some projects where this new body and the Mayor's Youth Council could cooperate. One example would be the forums that we had hosted last year for candidates. So that would be an example of something where they would work together. But I would say by and large, the, this new group would be handling most of the school-related issues, but there would certainly be room for crossover between the two of them, and we encourage that in this piece.
Is it your sense that there are enough students to have, a really committed group of students serving on both the Mayor's Youth Council and this body?
Certainly. We've had, in the past three or four years, far more applicants for the Mayor's Youth Council than we could let onto the board. I think last year, if you can remember maybe the exact number, but
Over 60?
We had over 60 applications, and I would say that 50 of them were well-qualified applicants that would have done an excellent job. So I think, I think we have more than enough students who are willing and able to serve.
No?
Would there any time
I'm going to butt in here for just one minute. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the tail end.
At any time, might there be an issue of confidentiality on any of the discussions that the board might have?
I think in this format, where they're meeting as a group, just like the Mayor's Youth Council has met the last many years.
Yeah.
The information that we would be sharing with them would come either through a school board member, or through a building administrator, or district administrator, and we would deal with any kind of filtering that would need to occur in terms of any data practices or data private information. So I don't see that as a problem. The real advantage I see, Noel, of this approach, number one, is they came to us, which I felt is so much better than us trying to artificially create a, a school, or students, school board member who really has no power and really only can sit at the table but, and talk, but really doesn't have any ability to influence specifically the way a particular board will go. I think they understand what their role is, and I guess I believe, in listening to the three of them talking to Matt and I the other day, I believe that, you know, they can, they can demonstrate over the years, the projects that they took on that were school-related, which really helped us to look at direction and whatever, whether that was candidate forums, whether it was looking at, you know, school issues in terms of budget reductions and so on. We've been able to use the thinking of these folks over that time. So I, I think we have kind of a known quantity, and we also have the real advantage of them being willing to have some of their rising senior members split off and actually come to this group. So we have a built-in connection between the Mayor's Youth Council and this new group. And we also have people that have run and worked with this type of organization before. So they're not all going to be trying to do that from scratch without any previous experience.
As one of the adult advisors who's been with the Mayor's Youth Council since its inception, Zach Pruitt and I meet with the kids every three weeks, or whatever their meeting schedule is, whatever they determine to be their meeting schedule. I want, since I've been with them for so long, I want to just clarify a couple of things. They really do serve an advisory capacity, and this came, this kind of division from the Mayor's Youth Council to a district youth council came at the request of Mayor Graham. He really wanted the Mayor's Youth Council to focus on events related to the community. And they're 15 really talented juniors and seniors, and they were really spread pretty thin, and addressing many different things that were coming to them also from the school district side of things, as Ian has spoken to, and I know spoke with you, Dr. Richardson and Matt. So the, the request came to kind of move this to more of a, really a city entity, and we see a need to have also a youth voice in school district affairs that's different from anything that exists right now, because we're not about event, event planning at all. We started that way, the kids kind of had a very difficult time transitioning in a leadership role to really being in advisory capacity. They always want to plan things, and plan activities, and plan events. And our initial council, eight years ago, we really had to work with them to say, we are about advising the city, the city council, the advisory boards. So the council has changed over the years. We've always had kids appointed to various committees for the city, Parks and Rec, the Mayor's Task Force on Alcohol and Drug Use, all of the different kind of committees that work, we've always had kids sitting on that. And over the last couple of years, it's taken on a more school focus, and it just, a lot of it just depends upon the students that are on the committee, are on the youth council at the time. So that's kind of how the conversation started this year, and that's how we've worked at, for months, kind of with the mayor to figure out, how do we make this work? And his goal is to get even more kids involved in, in leadership at both the city and the school level. He also wants to take the candidates that we get that don't get chosen for either the Mayor's Youth Council or District Youth Council, to then appoint those kids to serve on boards and commissions. So either furthering out leadership possibilities for kids in our community. In regards to selection, we send out, I send out a nomination form to all of the teachers and staff in the school, asking for them to identify students that are strong leaders in their classroom. And they nominate those students, we send a letter, we also open it up to anyone to apply. But we want teachers to look at their class and grab kids that they think might really be good at this work, but might not automatically apply to be on the council. So we send a personal invitation to them, inviting them to apply. They fill out a pretty comprehensive application, and then when it comes to selection day, it's a full day, we're usually locked up in the city hall for about eight hours because it's a blind read. Every single candidate, every single application is reviewed by every single Mayor's Youth Council member, and there are no names attached to it. So it's a blind read, and we score them on a rubric. Once we have the rubric, we put all of the, we take all of the top numbers, and only then do we reveal who the candidates' names are. And once we have the candidates' names up on the board, then the kids look to see, we want to make sure we have kids from all different groups represented at the high school. So they are self, they're selecting, but they're selecting after a blind read of the application. And then that data goes to the mayor, and then he does the final approval on the list. And I will say, at the last selection process, he did add additional students that he wanted to have represented on the council. So that's just a little bit of clarification on the application process. Now with having two boards, it's going to be a really long, really long day of reviewing applications, but we think that's the most fair, fair way to do it.
Other questions?
Other questions?
I had a follow-up question on the application process. So, if the district youth council, if the board were to vote to approve, in terms of the final, the mayor in the past has done the fun, would you expect the board to be involved, or a board liaison? How would you see the board involved?
Yeah, I think that that would be very important, that you have an opportunity to see the candidates, and then look at their applications, and then either approve or make additional suggestions. And we'd be totally open to what you, what you would want to do on that.
The other thing is, is as I talked to our three spokespeople today, or the other day, we talked about the idea that we wanted to give this a little bit of time for you guys to let it percolate. They would like to come back to you on April the fourteenth and request approval, and I think at that time, given the things that you've asked a little more clarification on, I think they would be ready to reflect with you, issues around making sure that Arcadia is, should be or shouldn't be at the table, given that they have a separate school board and a separate school district, for all intents and purposes. Making sure that we've got a strategy to allow ALC students to be part of the process. And I think a little bit about what you'd like to see in terms of the level of support in terms of the initial selection process, whether you just want a board representative to sit with you as you do that piece, or do you want all the board to look at the final candidates and make that decision? I think it would help to have some review from you on that piece, so that you could talk to the board about that when you come back.
We have had ALC students serve on the Mayor's Youth Council in the past, so we, they are also, they also nominate students through letters.
Good.
So, I had one follow-up that it might be directed more at Dr. Richardson and Matt, that the district would appoint an administrator, and do you foresee any, Marnie's been serving in that capacity in the past, would that, would you be serving on them, would she be serving on the Mayor's Youth Council?
Well, and I think that's part of the issue that I have not had a chance to talk to Marnie about, is kind of what her situation is as the mayor kind of rejiggers the focus.
I don't know what my situation is from, yes, we haven't figured on that.
Frankly, Marnie and Zach have done a great job in terms of supporting the Mayor's Youth Council, and it would be wonderful if they could continue in this role. I think the difference would be, there are going to be times, I think, that as these guys are working on an issue or need more information, that it would be, they might be asking, you know, a board member to come, or other board members to come, they might be asking Matt or I to come to talk. If we're talking about technology, you know, Matt would probably be the one. If we're talking about calendars, I noticed you brought calendars up, if we're talking about calendars, or if we're talking about major issues in terms of budget and budgeting, or in terms of things that are going on in terms of legislature, that's probably rules for the superintendent, might be the individual involved. The advantage, I think, of having the district youth council, my sense is that would be, that meeting would probably be here in this building, and it would give, I think, other members of the administrative team an opportunity to attend at the request of the council.
It is important to have a school person there at every meeting, just to help with some of those. When the kids have gone in and done classroom presentations, like around the budget cuts or whatever, we've needed to get information out to the whole student body, the youth council is served in that capacity. So, it's nice to have an administrator present to kind of help them make some of those things work, but they do run their meetings exclusively on their own, we just, are service of order.
And I do remember the last time we were talking budget reductions, I know I was asked to come to the meeting and share information about the budget reduction process and so on, so that members of the council knew what was going on, and how they wanted to be able to frame that, to talk to the other students about it.
And they made classroom presentations to every classroom. That was great.
Other questions? Well, thank you for coming and presenting your proposal to us.
We'll see you in April.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are ready to move on to our second item, which I believe is the C presentation.
Yes. So, we have my buddy Fritz over here, who was one of the, one of the parents in the district that accompanied me to the Schools for Equity and Education Day at the Capitol for our region. And with us was also Deion Gray, but she's in Florida, so she's not here to tell us about it. But, so we thought we'd give you a little bit of, a snippet of how that went. So, our C representative, Deb Griffiths, is our leader for the day, and she just does a terrific job of making appointments for the legislators that each group needs to try to meet with, and giving us the platforms that I think you all got in your packets. So, to start out with, we had a great team behind us. So, for those of you who don't know much about Schools for Equity and Education, I believe, Chris, you will correct me, there are like sixty schools?
Yeah, I believe we're at about sixty school districts right now that are-
That belong to Schools for Equity and Education. And these districts are similar to ours, in that they're communities with low property values, making it hard to pass levy questions, and having, you know, truly an equitable experience for their students as far as course offerings and the whole gamut. And the C vision is to ensure equal access to high-quality education for all children, regardless of where they live. And some of you might remember, a few years ago, two years ago, was it the pizza, the pizza video-
Pizza video.
That just did a great job of showing how the wealthy district, you get a big pizza, and if you're not in the wealthy district, you get a small pizza, and it was a great metaphor for this.
It still costs you just as much.
That's right, but you just get a tiny little bit, and it probably doesn't taste good either. So, that was a very clever way to illustrate this issue of inequity in school funding. And we'll see this year's version of the new movie to show this inequity in a few minutes. But I wanted to just tell you a little bit of what Fritz and Deion and I did. And just to give a little more background, some of you know Fritz from Accelerate Northfield, and Deion, we have the connection with Deion Gray, because, well, the three of us have also been involved in the Cannon Valley Youth Orchestra. And so, it just seemed like a good fit of the three of us to do this. So, our first meeting of the day was with Senator Kevin Dahl. And we were really lucky to get there right away and be his first appointment, so we had a really nice visit with him, and he was really great talking about, you know, all the bills that are being proposed, and he just really did a good job for us. And he, I think, I think he just really got us on the right foot, on the right foot. So, and he obviously understands what schools need for funding mandates. We had no trouble, of course, making that clear to him, he knows about that. And so, that's pretty much clear. So, some of the other topics that we started to talk about with the people we were touring was the problem of all-day kindergarten, and the challenges for that for cost and space, and how that will work for some of these C districts, so that was a big one. The teacher and principal evaluations that are being discussed at the Capitol, again, challenges for cost, space, and administrative time. We had an interesting, just chat tour, I overheard a chat about Capitol project efforts, and at one point, there were two C members talking to a lawmaker and saying, "You know what? We have fixed our roof every two years, but we can't afford to replace it." So, there was a lot of discussion about, "We're doing Band-Aids, we're always doing Band-Aids, and we're not getting," whether it's a Capitol project issue, or trying to start a new program in the, in, you know, for a certain cohort of students. So, we heard a lot of that. The other, the other thing that kept being brought up was this statewide anti-bullying initiative, which, again, school leaders were, okay, how, where are we going to get the money? What about the bullying prevention that we're doing in our own schools? Some of us already feel like we've got that under control. So, there was a lot of these mixed feelings of, "Well, we can handle that on our own site," and, or, "Maybe do we do need help from the legislature and other things." So, there's just some gray areas there. And I guess, just to sort of finish up, and you can add whatever, I have forgotten, after our visit with Senator Dahl, the whole Capitol area got really busy. It was one of those days where different groups descended with, upon us with like fifty people, so we could hardly even get around. And so, then it was, it was pretty hard when we finally got to visit with David Bly, there was hardly any room to even stand and listen to him in the hallway. So, towards the end, we really couldn't get quite as much, you know, one-on-one speaking with these representatives. And the last thing I'd like to say before Fritz can, you know, can join in, is that it was, it was really a great experience to be listening to school personnel from other districts, and know that we're kind of all in it together, and that if we keep together, we might make a difference. It's going to be hard, but Fritz, did you want to add?
One nice thing was that Deb was commending Northfield's anti-bullying policy to all the representatives who spoke to, as being very concise, and it covers nicely without dividing up special groups. I'd seen Deb speak before, and knew that her three main topics were relative to when I was in the public schools, that the baseline funding has slipped, that equality among schools, which used to be, there used to be lots of laws mitigating against that, the laws have, those have slipped, so there's much more inequality among schools, and that the number of unfunded mandates has increased over time. So, the most optimistic thing that came out of the day was that both Kevin Dahl and David Bly both had, were very up on all the minutia of all the issues, that they knew exactly what bills were in what committees, and what was going on in the language of them, and that they had all the right intentions. So, the optimistic thing was that we're represented by people who really have all of C's interests at heart, and the pessimistic thing was that it became very clear through all the minutia, that it's taken a very long time for all that slippage to occur, and that it seemed very unlikely of ever getting back to time zero, whether to call that nineteen eighty or whatever, that any improvements will be tiny against the amount of change that's happened over the years. So, I was very impressed with our representatives, and somewhat discouraged about the potential to ever catch up to the status quo when I was a kid.
I want to thank you for coming, and to Deion too, off in Florida. They were, they were amazing, they were the best questions, and it was really good. And then we have our little movie, the new, the new C movie.
The new C movie.
Yes, indeed.
Suppose I need to hit play, that might be helpful. Turn the volume down over here. It's just, it's just background music. Imagine there's very soothing music in the background.
There you go.
Yep. So, that's the latest C movie, you can see it on the website, share it with others.
I thought, I was thinking of the op-ed piece in the Sunday paper about the crisis in the rural towns, and education was brought into that conversation as well.
Yep, yep. Any other questions about our trip to C?
Carrie?
Not a question, but just a comment. I really like the format of the platform, having been the C representative for many years, and having the dry bullet points, it's really nice, I think-
That was Deb.
But, you know, it really helps, I think it helps members to get their heads around what the issue is, and be able to articulate it to their parent groups and their own communities to, you know, kind of generate some momentum around the issues. I think it's really good, the way it's put together.
Yeah, it's, with the boxes, it's easier than the last one, we did was a little bit more busy, I think. Yeah, she did a great job.
Yeah.
So, keep that in mind, you know, we are all aware of it, but some lawmakers aren't, so, that's just something to keep in the back of our-
Other questions, Rachel? Julie?
Just a comment and a question. I want to thank Ann and Fritz and Deion for going, I think it's super important that we do that, do this, because I think legislators have a vision of how they create these laws that they think will ultimately benefit students, and then the way they get interpreted down, and the way they're asked to be administered, and I think there's a huge disconnect there. And I think that people who live it every day, like school boards and parents, really have to articulate that with legislators, and help them understand where that disconnect is, and what it's really costing an individual student's experience, and school boards having to pull hair out of their heads trying to make, you know, these laws that were mandated to work. And so, I think it's extremely important work, and again, I think we're really fortunate in that we have the representation of Northfield with our legislators, and that we're a part of C, because they do really, really good work. And I'm hoping that they can get some legs on the bullying, the anti-bullying, and really be able to show districts like Northfield, and how we fully, you know, articulated that well, and not, we don't need another unfunded mandate.
And my question about one of the platforms, I'm not sure what, alternative facilities revenue, what is that?
Okay. Well, the purpose of alternative facilities revenue, the largest twenty-five districts in the state right now, and you're thinking, you think about the fact that there are approximately three hundred and thirty school districts in Minnesota, the top twenty-five have the ability to levy for major capital projects without doing bond issues, and without going out every time to do a vote of the community in order to get that. And this is not to build big buildings, or to do major pieces, but it's to repair the roofs, it's to tuck-point the building, it's to replace windows, it's to do remodeling and repair of various facilities. And basically, what C is proposing is that we move away from that being determined only because of the size of your district and the amount of square feet that it has under roof, and really looking at every district having the ability to do the same thing. And so, that's really the proposal that we've tried to look at. The good thing is, if there's a good thing, the good piece is that the state has just- The good thing is, if there's a good thing, the good piece is that the state has just completed a facilities review task force. That task force is presented to the legislature. And in that task force report, the recommendation was all school districts should have the ability to do this. What we know right now is that the concern at, at the Capitol is even though they have a one point two five million dollar budget surplus this year, at this point, the focus of that surplus appears to be to eliminate some taxes that have already been determined, like the warehouse tax, et cetera, and to maintain, maintain or increase the amount of rainy day fund balance they have. And although, you know, I would never tell you don't have a rainy day fund balance, our concern obviously is that there, there are not significant efforts right now to think about any additional funding for schools, other than the three and a half million dollars that appears like it will be used to purchase reduced price lunches for students across the state. So the purpose of this alternative facilities piece would be to give every district that opportunity. Then the other piece that's part of that is to think about, and there should there be any equalization in that levying piece. Because again, some of the districts that are able to do that have a significantly larger tax base. And so to do a alternative facilities project is, has very limited impact on the community. Other districts like Northfield and other districts that are part of C, the impact of doing that alternative facilities piece will be greater. So that's what that piece is about. And it does have, I think, some legs, but it, I'm not sure that it's going to happen in a year when the governor is not, not proposing any kind of new money. And even though most of the, of the cost of this would end up being at the local level.
Julie, the, the positive thing about that, the task force was that even the twenty-five schools that are especially privileged now are on board with making sure that it's shared.
That everybody else gets it.
So there, there really didn't appear to be any opposition aside from just inertia. So the C's perspective was just get it voted on, vote this task force, get it done.
I guess I could share too, a couple of other pieces because Ann and I have been talking back and forth, you know, on this. I've been on the legislative committee or chaired the legislative committee for the last fifteen years for C. And so, you know, I, I've been pretty significantly involved in this. I've also been the one that's really pushed to try to keep streamlining the platform and making it simpler and making it easier to read and getting it on one page and getting it with white space and whatever. Because I know the extent to which a legislator who's getting six hundred bills dropped on them has a chance to really read anything beyond what they can read in a couple of minutes at a quick glance. The, there's some other bills that obviously are rolling through right now. Ann has mentioned one, that's the anti-bullying bill. And I, you know, I do believe that, that we're going to have some fairly significant impact on amendments to that bill, which will really focus, as Ann indicated, on trying to use the wording that we've used from the old VAS model. And again, the focus really being there on the idea of it has to be a pattern of behavior repeated over time. And that it has to be an imbalance of power or strength between the two individuals. Where the initial piece for the bullying legislation basically said, any interaction between any two kids could be called bullying. And, you know, again, what we're trying to frame is making sure that we really address those issues where bullying is occurring, but with, with, we don't end up burning a huge amount of time for a building administrator having to do a bullying investigation about every time two individuals have any kind of disagreement. So it's important to get, I think, to that piece. We also were concerned about the people that are going, were going to have to be trained because in the initial language, it was going to be including all volunteers, including the volunteer that comes in once a year to read to the class. And would have to get training and, and that appears like that's going to be moving out. So there are several pieces that I think are going to be, when the amendments to this come out, are going to be better positioned. And I think it has a lot to do with, with folks like the folks that went up to C and other folks that have been working with the legislature. I was also up on Monday and basically met with leadership in both the House and Senate with various meetings. So we had an opportunity to kind of really hammer that piece home in terms of what's there. We know we have some other ones that I think we just need to be very, very watchful of. One of these basically is additional modification on sick leave. If you remember, we had the issue last year when they, they kind of put a new sick leave bill through that nobody even saw it coming. And suddenly it became law. Now they're actually looking at even expanding the, the individuals that are eligible for a person to use their sick leave for and allowing them to have unlimited accrual of sick leave days. So that you would never, the sick leave days, if you approved them, would never go away. That one we're, we're really concerned about right now. A third one has to do with what's called HITA, H-I-T-A, Health Insurance Transparency Act, which really initially came out of Education Minnesota with the idea of creating a statewide health insurance program. They've really scaled that piece back, but in, in doing HITA, there's some things that are going to be really problematic for districts like Northfield that has self-insurance in terms of, of the fact that we're able to negotiate much lower rates because we can use a third party to negotiate with the various insurance companies. Because in the end, remember that we aren't paying a premium to an insurance company. We're simply using one of the insurance carriers to do the administrative maintenance and logistics of the program. But we actually pay the bills each month when we are paying bills for medical insurance or dental insurance. And so there's some real problems in terms of the way this is written, in terms of sealed bids and some other pieces that are going to make it much more difficult for us to negotiate the best possible rates. So again, we're trying to work with, with that particular piece. The final message that maybe is the only kind of downer from, from what I'm hearing at the legislature so far is the message over and over again is there is no new money for schools this year. And so as I said, other than the three and a half million that will, will, I think, very quickly get used to pay all, down or eliminate the reduced price lunch meals, there's really not necessarily going to be any new funding for schools. And remember that when we really think about the amount that we got even this last two years, we got one and a half percent in the first year. We'll get a larger amount in the second year because we're going to be adding all-day kindergarten. The actual increase in the base formula, however, is only one and a half percent. And the rate of inflation is greater than one and a half percent. So in both years, we will actually see the buying power of the dollars we have go down. And as you've heard me say about a hundred times before, in the last twenty years, that differential is over two thousand dollars a pupil, less in terms of buying power now than we had back in nineteen ninety-three. And so there, there is some real concern there. But I also know that when you have an election year and the governor's up to be elected and all the representatives are up to be elected, there is very little appetite for spending a lot of new money, other than getting the bonding bill done. And if possible, eliminating some taxes that have gotten some bad reviews as they've been rolled on and talked about, even though they have not started to be collected yet. So that's kind of the update in terms of where we are now. This is going to be a very, very quick session. And we know that there's a lot of noise about wanting to get done and out of there by the end of April. We'll see if that actually happens. It never has happened before. But that's kind of the, the message that we've heard is that, that they really want to get done and out.
Sixteen years ago it happened.
Sixteen years ago. I wasn't here sixteen years ago. There we go, Doc. All right. So that's just a quick update. But again, you know, thanks to Fritz and Deion and Ann for really stepping up and being part of that process. And over the years, Ann and Julie have kind of mother hen, you know, getting groups together to go forward. We've got a really quality team at C and Deb has been a real jewel in terms of an individual that's able to get all the appointments set up, get all the logistics nailed down, get all the materials that people need and get people to the folks that they need to talk to.
And she can answer any question.
Yes. And, and if you think it was crazy on Tuesday.
I did.
On, on Monday, they had the anti-bullying rally and they had thousands of, of kids and adults and a live band in the rotunda. And not only you couldn't get through, but you couldn't hear either. So.
Sounds like an oxymoron. Anti-bullying rally?
An anti-bullying rally. It was a positive thing. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks Fritz for coming in and for sharing with Ann the report.
We had a good time. Learned a lot.
Thank you. All right. Next up is the district implementation of world's best workforce. And I remind board members that you had in your packet a few items for that.
Couple of items for that. And Mary and I are going to tag team this one. She's got the flashy presentation. I, I will just bore you with the dry details. What we wanted to share with you tonight is a little bit about the details of the world's best workforce in terms of what the law actually says. And then we'd like to show you how we intend to use all of the elements that are currently in our district's kind of arsenal of, of programming in terms of our strategic plan, in terms of our school improvement plans, in terms of our PLC goals, in terms of all the other things that we currently do that will end up being part of this process. So I want to call your attention to this first page and I want to take just a few minutes with this. What I tried to do is to take the entire world's best workforce bill and kind of distill it to one side of one page of, of a piece of paper. Basically, the, the things that are part of the bill is that there has to be a comprehensive, long-term plan to support and improve teaching and learning, that's aligned to creating the world's best workforce. There's five goals that it has to address identified by the legislature. First one is in terms of school readiness. The second is in terms of all third grade students achieving grade level literacy, which is the, the, the program that's already in place, that's reading well by the end of third grade. There's a piece on closing the achievement gap, which is, is again tied to the MMR and all of the work that's currently being done in terms of addressing that. It has to do with all students graduating from high school, looking at the graduation rates. And it has to do with all students attaining career and college preparation, which is really tied to the whole concept of workforce readiness, which is another piece of work that, that we're currently doing in the district. So it identifies what the plan has to have. We have to have district and school side goals and benchmarks for instruction and student achievement. We have to have a process for assessing and evaluating each student's progress towards meeting state and local academic goals. We have to have a process for identifying strengths and weaknesses in instruction and student progress to career and college readiness. And then a system to periodically review the effectiveness of instruction and curriculum, which all of those pieces that we have, and we'll look at how we're doing on each of those. We also have to have implementation strategies for improving and implementation of best practices for improving instruction, curriculum, student achievement, as well as technology and collaboration. We also have as part of this plan, a requirement that we have a system of principal and teacher evaluation. If you remember, we piloted the principal evaluation last year. That's fully implemented this year. Currently, we're getting ready to pilot the teacher evaluation with a small number of teachers across the district to make sure all the pieces are there. And Matt and Mark Thornton are out in the buildings right now doing a presentation to all of the staff to talk about the new teacher evaluation process. And as part of that, they're sharing, here's what the state would require to do if you do the state model. Here's what we're doing in Northfield. And again, helping teachers to see the differences in terms of what we believe is the quality and thought in terms of how to best do a teacher evaluation model. With the understanding that if at any time, teachers do not believe that they can be comfortable with a model that was developed with teachers and administrators sitting down at a table and working through the last six months to think through and develop a quality teaching model, they will be required to do the state model, which is significantly more difficult to administer and significantly more difficult for teachers to work through. And then finally, as part of, of the plan, we have to have an annual budget for continuous implementation of the plan, which is really tied to monies that are currently in place for curriculum and staff development, are tied to the monies that are currently in place to provide our district assessment coordination that we do and to do the various kinds of testing that are currently in place. Beyond the plan then, we also have to have a process. Process has to identify the budget. It has to have a school board established advisory committee that provides active community participation and planning. We'll be using and working with our DPAC, which we're also going to expand in terms of the numbers of people involved. We're hoping to expand to include some of our new district youth council members, as well as individuals from some other agencies within the community like Healthy Community Initiative and also other individuals, again, like Fritz and others who are interested, community members who want to be involved and work with that process. We also need to look at periodic surveys of affected constituencies. If you remember, we did a survey of, of all of our parents last year as part of the principal evaluation process. And again, while there were some questions in that principal evaluation model that were principal specific, there were lots of other questions within that model that we're really looking at core climate and how people felt about our school district's performance. And so we're going to be able to use that data again that we've already worked through and we'll be going through again through the principal evaluation model. We'll be doing those assessments again this spring. We also have to have an annual public meeting, which will be scheduled next fall. We intend to do that as part of a regular school board meeting or maybe in conjunction with a regular school board meeting. Because the other group we really want to bring into this process is Northfield Promise. And so the idea being that we might be able to do a joint meeting with Northfield Promise to talk about what we have learned so far and the information that we have so far to share. And that, that meeting might start maybe at six thirty or, or a little bit earlier and then maybe the regular board meeting dovetail with that at seven thirty. And so we look at, at that piece and we'll get the details of that worked out over the coming months. We also have to do a published report. As you know, we've done a published report since day, you know, day one, the entire time I've been here and for years before. But with that report, will be expanded now to include all the elements of the world's best workforce. So we'll be working through those details. And then finally, electronic summary of published report to be sent to the commissioner. This is the one piece that still, if I was to take my magic wand over here, I would draw this huge question mark. Because this is supposed to be a one-page report. Because the commissioner is going to have to look at three hundred and thirty of those reports, plus reports from every charter school district. So we have asked repeatedly for, have been promised that we would see a template of the summary report. We have not to date seen the template. So we'll be working with that. We're going to have all the pieces to put together and put into that, but that's likely to come late in the game and we're going to have to figure out how to make that work before we do the presentation in October. What we also envision is it's very likely that our report will be a summary skeleton with a whole bunch of links to it. So that we'll be linking our strategic plan, we'll be linking our school improvement plans, we'll be linking our PLC, evidence of practice documents. We'll be linking all of the other pieces that we have around assessment and how we're doing in terms of graduation rate and how we're doing in terms of performance of each of our subgroups. All will be linked to that core document. What I know from talking to some other districts that are trying to put that together is they had the same reaction I had. The report will probably be about six hundred pages long when you put all those pieces together. But the reality is, we're going to have. we're going to have to look at this core summary and then have all the linkages to make that happen. So that's really what the World's Best Workforce is about in terms of a plan, has goals, it must contain those items, and the process must include the elements listed at the bottom in terms of those six. I'm going to ask Mary to share with you some information about how we're looking at putting together World's Best Workforce here in Northfield. And she's told me that if I shut up, it will move faster. So, that's my intention.
Well, I did not say that.
Did I put words in your mouth?
Yes.
I would never say that to you. So, thank you for the opportunity to present information on the World's Best Workforce. And Dr. Richardson has really gone over the statute quite well. So, this is going to be the same song, second verse. And so, what does this mean for the Northfield Public Schools? So first, we'll look at the plan, and then we'll look at the process components of the legislation and how it applies directly to our work here at Northfield. The first item needed are the clearly defined goals. And we start with a strategic plan that was approved by the school board, and this can be found on the district website and in the annual report. And it contains six main points that support the mission statement: quality education, stewardship, climate, communication and partnerships, curricular outcomes, and diversity. So that's where we start. Then the District Educational Advisory Council, which is better known as DPAC, takes the strategic plan and recommends goals for building and building-level initiatives. And this council is comprised of board members, administrators, teachers, and community members. And to comply better with the world's best workforce, we are adding more community members to the council. And Fritz joined us last month along with Zach, and we will be continuing to add community members to our council. The school sites use these goals to generate their school improvement goals. And then the PLCs then use these for their specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, timely, otherwise known as SMART goals. And so you can see, we already have most of this process in place. We just have to do a little addition of community members to our DPAC council to make it more equitable. As we move to the process for assessing and evaluating student progress, two of the main ideas here are the building site progress reports, which are reported to the school board at meetings, and the evidence of practice reports for each PLC, which are already published at the end of each semester on the school website. And the district testing and assessment program plays a major role by providing the data from an individual to a class, to a grade level, to school, to district level. So we do have a lot of data available. The review and examination of the data are crucial pieces for assessing and evaluating this process. And tonight's report, of course, is outlining the plan, so does not include specific data. There are five major areas in the plan to review and evaluate effectiveness of instruction and student progress. We have a district curriculum review process already in place. We have the District Curriculum and Staff Development Committee, the DCSDC, if you're collecting acronyms, and they work with the site councils to plan and evaluate staff development. And Dr. Richardson spent quite a bit of time on the principal and teacher evaluations, which are already in progress. As part of the continuous improvement model, we strive to improve instruction, curriculum, and student achievement. Our comprehensive and current curriculum is reviewed by teachers to ensure that all standards are in place. Improvement for instruction comes through the staff development process, as well as individual teacher improvement goals. And that will be part of the teacher evaluation process. And this all leads to our main goal: student achievement. At the last school board meeting, we had a report from the response to intervention and the positive behavior intervention supports, which highlighted two of the more recent initiatives, as well as the transformational technology initiative, and all of which are strategies for improving student achievement. Opportunities for students beyond the school day include extra and co-curricular activities and community activities as well. The mission statement for the Northfield Public Schools states, "Northfield Public Schools is committed to delivering educational excellence that empowers all learners to participate in our dynamic world." So achieving success in this mission, excuse me, relies on more than the school district. It takes a village or a team. As you can see, this looks rather like a baseball field. We're trying to think spring here.
We've redrawn this multiple times, too.
You're right. We had it as a donut, and we had it as a target, and baseball seemed to work the best for us. And as you can see, the community is the overarching, with the DPAC and the Northfield Promise providing a lot of input to the school board, which goes to the superintendent's cabinet, out to the DCSDC, site councils, PLCs, to our ultimate goal: successful students. The next five slides show the main components of the World's Best Workforce Plan and what the Northfield Public Schools already has in place to meet those. And Northfield Promise filters into all of these, so it's not listed on each one, but they are a huge support in each of these goals. These five components illustrate what the World's Best Workforce is striving to achieve with this legislation. The activities or examples listed on each of the five slides give specific areas where we can generate data that would be part of the final report to you in October.
I think it's also important to understand that this is the first goal that Mary's put up here, is the one goal which really a whole lot of folks across the state are kind of scratching their head about. Because this is really about data and readiness, which is outside the K-12 realm. I think it's very fortunate as a district that we have done a lot of work with preschool screening and with Bridges to K and other strategies that have helped us to address needs of students before they begin school, so that we get more students who are more ready for school and more ready to be successful. A lot of districts right now are saying, we're not really sure yet how we're even going to measure these goals. I think we've already got a leg up on beginning to figure this part out.
Right. In fact, we just had the first meeting with Northfield Promise, with the action team, on school readiness. And that committee and Northfield Promise will be a huge asset to us in this, and how we gather data and determine readiness for kindergarten. The next goal is all students reading at grade level by third grade. And you can see the components we have under this goal and how we can measure some of the data. Accelerate Northfield plays a huge part in that, as you saw in the data presented last week, or last, two weeks ago, along with the multi-tiered systems of support, the new acronym for RTI or Response to Intervention, and English Learner Program. And again, you will see some of these repeated because they do fall under more than one category. Closing the achievement gap is another one. And again, you'll see Title I, English Learner Program, some of the same items repeated here where we can gather some data. All students graduate from high school. Here we add the Explore Plan and the ACT, and the Explore and Plan are going to become ASPIRE. And I'm not sure what ASPIRE stands for.
I don't know if it's got an acronym for ASPIRE, but what will be happening is that the Explore and Plan disappears next year, and the replacement will be the ASPIRE test, which will be offered at a couple of different levels. It will be administered by Pearson, which is why Pearson now is the new vendor for the state for the, actually the three through 10th grade assessments. And that licensure for ASPIRE is coming from ACT, who's going to continue to have control over it. The core with the, or the core issue with the ASPIRE test, and the reason that Explore and Plan are being phased out, is that at the state level, we have to be able to continue to have testing that will measure all of the standards in reading and mathematics. And the argument has been that Explore and Plan do not measure all of the standards. We don't have the detail yet as to exactly how ASPIRE will do that, but we also are anticipating and expecting that ASPIRE will continue to be something that will be correlated with the actual ACT data. So it will be giving us an idea in both eighth and 10th grade as to the level of performance of students when they get to the ACT.
And you'll notice that on this slide, we've also added the other programs that are unique to our high school with the Academy and Torch, along with the multi-tiered systems of support that are expanding now into the middle school and high school. And again, our English Learner Program, opportunities beyond the school day, and our Alternative Learning Center. And all students attain college and career preparedness. We have the eighth grade conferences and transition to high school, and we have career exploration that takes place in several of our classes. And again, the Explore Plan soon to become ASPIRE, along with ACT. And then the workforce development that Mr. Lear talked about two weeks ago, too, also play a part. And the budget, this is the budget piece that we did include in the annual report. It's a little bit difficult to see, but it does point out that 81.9% of the district budget goes to support pupil and instruction. So, almost 82% of the budget goes directly to students and their instruction. Now about the process. The first part is presenting this to you tonight as the plan. And then we will go to a public meeting in September or October. Erin and Zach and I have already been talking about trying to combine it with the Northfield Promise, meaning that they would like to have annually and perhaps even serving cookies. But to take care of it either at a board meeting or directly before a school board meeting. And we left it rather vague, September or October, because the State Department hasn't put a firm timeline on that. And then we have to get this report and summary to the Minnesota Department of Education and the commissioner by October 1. And again, we're supposed to take all of this information and condense it to a one-page report, which hopefully we can just sum up in one word like awesome, and send to the commissioner, because that's going to be a task in itself to get the, all of the data and information condensed to a one-page report. So, that's the World's Best Workforce. Are there any comments or questions that we can help you with?
I had one other piece on this timeline. The most recent discussion I've had with the folks at the department, Steve Dibb, who is the person at the department as an assistant commissioner that is working on putting all of this together, I talked to him about the strategy that we were looking at doing. I said, "You do realize, Steve, that it would take us days to actually present all the detail of the plan, if we're going to look at all of the different buildings and each of the school improvement plans they have, and the information about their individual goals, et cetera?" And he said, "Well, I understand that." And he said, "You're probably going to be just fine if you present a summary at the October meeting and then follow up and complete the rest of your school improvement plans over the next several months." And I said, "Well, that's good, because that's the way we're probably going to have to do this." Again, I think that's a part of the discussion that is yet to be had, is when the department actually puts out what this final summary presentation looks like, and then getting them to understand the reality of the information it requires. Because the only, only kind of presentation that could occur in a single night, as I see it, would be if you had a charter school with maybe 100 students in it. Then you might be able to actually do your presentation in one night. But with multiple buildings and multiple levels, with their own needs, if we want to do it justice, we need to spread it out. And I think all of you know from experience, there's a fatigue factor when we get beyond more than two school improvement planning processes in any one month. So, there is, I think, a sense from the department that they're going to have to provide some flexibility, but they also are trying to work within what the legislatures said to them, "You must do." Again, legislators even having less understanding of what the reality is than the department. I guess that's my editorial comment for this evening. Again, Mary and I would be very happy to answer any questions. For again, the idea being that we'd like to move from this presentation to your approval of our plan, so we can get this document published on our website and begin work in terms of putting all of these pieces together to go forward.
Noel?
What is the downside of missing one or more of the components of the plan?
You mean like, what is the punishment? The punishment is that, at least the way the World's Best Workforce legislation is written, that at the end of the first three years of implementation, if the commissioner would determine that you had not provided satisfactory progress in moving your district in terms of your educational goals, she could determine to withhold 2% of your school district's basic formula funding. And I've seen it in different formats, either to support you in determining how to spend that money or tell you how to spend that money going forward. Obviously, districts that would get in that mode, if you lose 2% of your basic formula, that's a significant chunk of dollars and would have a significant negative impact. So, unlike some other things, there actually are some teeth to doing this, but those teeth are three years out.
Rob?
You mentioned, Mary, the, excuse me, the strategic plan or the district strategic plan.
Correct.
Which includes climate, which seems to be something missing from the goal. So I'm just wondering how that fits in.
Each of the site improvement plans includes a climate goal.
Okay. It's not something that the plan says, that the plan must address the following goals, and that's not something that's included in the plan's requirements. So, I just don't want to see it like become a second-class citizen because it's not required by the state.
Sure. But it is included in each of the school site improvement plans. They have a climate goal.
And there is a piece of the measurement, Rob, that requires us to have climate data on a reg, and again, they don't define it, but on a regular basis. And obviously, the thinking that we had is because we will do a climate survey of the parent population of each building each year. We will have a lot of data to be able to share about how are the parents from each building feeling about the quality of the program that they have. And it's embedded in that, in that evaluation component at a little deeper level than I went in my broad stroke.
And as part of that survey, we are able to pull out the climate pieces, separate from the principal or evaluation piece. We can pull out the climate questions and get the data that way.
It is also something that, again, we were promised that they would have us have some examples, course of some climate surveys to use. I would say to you, we, at this point, do not have any of those samples currently available to us. I hope spring's eternal between now and fall. In the meantime, we're going to go ahead and do our own.
Other questions? Julie?
I have a question about the community meeting or the parent meeting. What is the goal of that? What is their vision for that? Is that just us strictly presenting, or is that asking feedback from the community, or what does that really entail?
That's rather vague at this point. It just says a community meeting is required. And then, so, okay, we will have one. And Erin and Zach and Dr. Richardson and I have been talking about how, just in vague terms at this point, how we want that to look and what could be presented in an hour. Say we go from 6:30 to 7:30 before a school board meeting. How would we present it? Would it be presentations? Would it be a school fair type of venue? That's still rather vague.
I think what we'd also try to look at, Julie, would be to think about a feedback strategy. So whether it's an opportunity for people who come to basically have a card that they can, they can share their information on. If we send out a follow-up survey, you know, we're going to If we send out a follow-up survey, you know, we're going to do a survey out to the entire community at various times during the year. It is just very fuzzy. And again, it's this idea that I think somehow they honestly believe that we're going to have 1,000 people in an auditorium talking to us about how they feel about the district's plan. The reality is, you know, I would love if we would have 20 or 25 or 30 people come. But I think the idea would be, we will have a strategy to allow anybody that comes to the session to be able to give us feedback about what they're hearing, so that we can use that to modify and improve the quality of our hiring.
Good. Thank you. Carrie?
Really just a comment. When I went up to the World's Best Workforce, I don't know what we call it.
The MSBA meeting?
Yeah. Yeah.
Instead of WWF, it's WF.
Well, what was so interesting to me was, I sat there and listened to all the things they said you had to have, and I thought, "We have all of those pieces already." And so I just, I could not get my head around how you would put it into the one-page document that they're asking for. But I really commend you for organizing all the things that we already have in a way that meets the goals of this legislation. I think that's just a huge organizational accomplishment.
It took a while.
And I think, you know, we really wanted to honor the work of our buildings in terms of their school improvement plans, and our PLCs in terms of the work they've done in terms of setting SMART goals and moving forward. So we wanted to think about how could we make those pieces fit. I would say, and I know I've told several of you that have been on DPAC through the years, the DPAC group we have has been the most conscientious, the most committed group of individuals I think I've ever worked with. You know, we traditionally have 20, 25 people, whether it's rain, shine, dark of night, snowstorm, whatever, people come. And I think they come because they feel they're having some meaningful discussion about really important ideas about what we need to do in the district. A lot of districts are going to have to try to create that from scratch right now, because they don't have that kind of a relationship with that DPAC group. I think the advantage with this is kind of spurring us to think about, how do we bring additional people into this? Couple groups that we had not really made an effort before is to bring students in. I think now we're going to have an opportunity to bring students into the process. And again, our hope is that we can draw in more community members like Fritz and others who are willing to step in and be part in that process, because I think getting that quality balance of community members and students and staff and administrators is really what makes DPAC click the way it does.
Other questions?
So I would just echo what Carrie said and commend you for, not just the organization, but as you said, Dr. Richardson, for honoring what's already been done in the district. And I think it's also really exciting, because you're not only honoring what's already been done, but looking forward towards some of the things with Northfield Promise and leaving that really open. So I think it's really nice to see it actually all come together. So, thank you.
And it's one of those things where, and I've said this to the Northfield Promise champion group several times already, it is almost like all, you know, all the happy worlds are colliding at once, in terms of the fact that the thoughts coming from Northfield Promise about what do we need to do are almost mirroring the requirements of the World's Best Workforce. And so I think we have that synergy of people really wanting to put this together and make it work, and some real excitement from a group of community members that's saying, "Gee, we want to do exactly the same things, and we're thrilled that the school district is on the same path as we are." So I think that's a really positive place for us to be. Again, I'm guessing that there are going to be a lot of school districts that don't have anything that looks like the Northfield Promise that's going to provide that additional impact of community directly into the things that we're trying to get down. All good.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are ready to move on to our first item for individual action, which is the World's Best Workforce Plan as an individual action to vote on, with the superintendent's recommendation to approve the plan that you just heard and had an opportunity to ask questions about. Move by Carrie to support the superintendent's recommendation, seconded by Rob. All right. We had, already had some questions and discussion, any other questions? All those in favor of approving the superintendent's recommendation and the World's Best Workforce, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are ready to move on to our next item, which is the Community Service Budget Revisions. And Erin did have a handout in our packet, a very colorful budget handout. Do you want to say?
We know who has the colored printer and access to it.
That's right. Do you want to tell us a little bit about?
Sure. I can give you a quick couple of overviews. In all honesty, only three lines have changed in this budget, so the only, the rest are exactly as you saw them last May. And the three lines that changed were the school-age childcare, the EV childcare, which is early ventures childcare, and then the preschool school readiness, which is just the line just above the purple shaded line. All of these changes are actually very much for the positive, in that they're changing due to increased enrollments. And as you saw in the paragraph, the Kid Ventures program had seen a 67 student difference in last year versus this year. And that can be a duplicate count, because if you're counted twice, so if you attend before-school childcare and then after-school childcare, you are counted twice in this count. And so there's 67 additional student slots that are being used this year. Summer Ventures, which also falls into that school-age childcare, has seen 19 additional students this past summer than the summer of 2012. And the Early Ventures, in the summer, saw the same number. They had 41, we had 41 students in Early Ventures, both the summer of 2012 and summer of 2013. But we do have six additional students in the school year program this year over last year. And then in the Hand-in-Hand preschool, we have an additional section over last year. So last year, we had six sections. This year, we have seven. We have four sections with 18 students, two with 16, and then our additional section has 10 students at the moment. So that is also an increase. Just another note on the positive, as far as the school readiness. If you remember, we went through the process and became four-star parent aware, so we are eligible for the high-rated preschool scholarships. And we do have eight families that have qualified and are starting to receive some dollars, which is very exciting. It's a pretty taxing process, and the families have to do it on their own, centers cannot do it for them. And so it's exciting to connect the families that are eligible, be able to access some of those early learning scholarships. And so all of those additional students in programs have obviously an increase in the revenue, and then they also have an increase in the expenses. So the changes that have happened in the expenses are primarily in the area of staffing and benefits.
And I think I would just reinforce with Erin's discussion about the four-star rating. The one other place the legislature has indicated, and the governor's indicated, that there may be movement in terms of additional dollars will be in early childhood education, because I think the concern was that the initial dollars that went forward were to a very limited number of counties. And so school districts in those counties could actually create their own funded programs with dollars that were there. All the other counties, including Rice, only were able to have individual parents get the money, and then they would have to, they had to go out on their own and find a program to be placed in. So our hope is that with some additional dollars, we're going to see additional funding that will flow, that will be available, not only for individual parents, but also for school districts that have four-star rated programs, to provide additional programming for kids. And I think we all know and believe that the more students that we can get at that preschool age and help them be ready for K, you know, the better we're going to be all the way around. So we just see that as a real positive piece, and that will be, if there is a silver lining to what otherwise does not appear to be much of a budget year, that may be the other place where additional funding may flow.
So we have the superintendent's recommendation to approve these revisions. You may have questions, but it would be nice to have a motion on the table first. Move by Julie? Seconded by Noel. Questions? Carrie?
I just make one comment. I just want to commend Erin and Community Services for the fiscal health that you're now demonstrating. It wasn't that many years ago that we were really looking at some pretty grim fund balances, and I'm just thrilled to see the strength of the financial health of the program.
Thank you. It is exciting. It's really neat to see the Hand-in-Hand increasing. I've heard some just terrific stories from parents, and it's been a few years since I've visited, but it must just be exploding.
We did have an open house last Tuesday for both Early Ventures and Hand-in-Hand, and there was a line at 6 o'clock before we opened, so that's an exciting thing to see. It was a fun night.
Great. Julie?
I believe there's a waiting list, isn't there, for Early Ventures?
There is in Early Ventures, in some classrooms in Early Ventures right now, yes, for next school year.
Word is out. What a great program it is.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the table to support the superintendent's recommendation to approve the revisions to the Community Services Budget. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. On to the consent grouping. And board members, I'll remind you, there were a few items, personnel items added, and grant and request on student activity count. Is there anything anyone wishes to pull from the consent grouping? All right. I have a motion to approve the consent grouping. Moved by Ann.
Seconded.
Seconded by John. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Items for information, there is enrollment report that you would receive in your packet. You have a few words to say, or just pay attention to the enrollment?
Just pay attention to the enrollment. Again, it is about as flat as anything could be for having seen almost no change in 10 years. So we're holding our own. We haven't had a horde of new people show up to grace our doorsteps, but we also are not seeing any significant drops either.
All right. With that, we have future meetings. We will not be meeting again until April, April 14th, and then April 28th. And I will remind board members that after we adjourn today, we have a closed negotiation session in the district office. So with that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by John. Seconded by Ann. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.